Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, November eighteenth, this twenty twenty-five. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Kent.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Here. All five members are present. Thank you very much. At this time, would you all please rise for Pastor Chad Fagundes from Colonia Church? Our invocation. Thank you, Chad.
Good morning. You guys bow your heads and pray with me? So, Father, we pause in this moment to recognize your sovereignty, Father, over the county, over the valley, over the country, God, over the world. So, we just ask, Father, in humility this morning, that you'd help us align with your ways. God, we pray, Father, that the will of God would be done here in the Kings County. And so, in the heart of that, God, I ask, Father, for wisdom and discernment and compassion for the Board of Supervisors today. Help them, God, in the decision-making. I pray, Father, for every organization that is represented here today, God, that you would bless them, that you would reveal your ways to them. God, I pray the same over each individual that's here. Would you reveal your ways to us, God, in only the way you can? So, I pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Everybody say amen.
This time, I have the... Soon to be retired sheriff, leading from the flag.
Yes.
Please join me.
Legion, lead the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very good. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kiri Martinez, for Employee of the Third Quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board formed the Employee Recognition Committee in nineteen ninety, and every quarter, employees are nominated based on their outstanding performance and achievement in various departments. The nominations are reviewed and voted upon by the committee, and the committee requests the Board to recognize and award the Employee of the Quarter with a presentation of certificate and the check amount of three hundred dollars. And we did add a new program this year, so the Employee of the Quarter will be entered into a chance to win Employee of the Year, which they get forty weeks, forty hours off if they are selected as the winner.
Wait a minute, forty hours?
Yes.
Eee, that's pretty good. Can I get in it?
If you, if you are nominated.
Okay. So, for the record, Doug at nomination.
So, the selected employee for the third quarter is Julie Henderson. Julie worked, works for the Ag Commissioner's Office. She started in two thousand fourteen as account clerk. Her strong work ethic and commitment to excellence led her to the promotion of Account Clerk Two in two thousand twenty-two and Accounting Assistant Two in March of two thousand twenty-five. Most recently, she was promoted to Ag Standard Inspector in May of two thousand twenty-five. Last year, Julie stepped up without hesitation to fulfill critical duties far beyond her official role when the Executive Secretary retired in the Ag Commissioner's Office. Julie took responsibilities such as managing deposits, repairing the annual financial statements, contributing to the budget process, and supervising office staff while continuing to carry on her own workload with exceptional competence and attention to detail. Julie's leadership and initiatives were instrumental in maintaining seamless operations during this transition. Julie has played a key role in training as supporting the newly hired Executive Secretary, ensuring a smooth onboarding process. Julie's accomplished all of this while completing the final semester of education, which was a significant step towards achieving her professional goal of becoming an Ag Inspector. Julie's dedication were recently rewarded with a well-deserved promotion to that very position. Even in Julie's new role, she continues to be a reliable resource and mentor the Executive Secretary in the spirit of teamwork and commitment that elevates the entire office. For all those reasons, Julie Henderson has been chosen Employee of the Quarter for the third quarter. Julie, if you'd like to come up?
Just tell him, Doug.
Julie, on behalf of the Board, we want to congratulate you on your employee of the third quarter.
Hey.
Are you good, officer? There for everyone. I'm out. You know, she gets her mail with Amber. A lot of words. Extra work. Hope I keep my father devout.
There are no favoritism when you go to Ag Department. You get your hours. You got to take a test. They don't trust me. They may sit in a room by myself. They take my phone away. Kind of embarrassing. Thank you. Congratulations, Julie. Okay, at this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on items of interest within the Board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The Board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members on the public will be provided an opportunity to address the Board. Each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker card is Victor Chauvin Jr.
Victor, for the haircut.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Victor Chauvin Jr., the head coach of Sierra Pacific High School Girls Basketball. We were here last year, being, a couple of months ago, actually, being honored by your Board. We have our Kings County home opener this tomorrow evening against Clovis High School. We're going to be playing at Lemoore College. I just wanted to extend an invite. We are actually creating an inaugural charity game where we will, half the proceeds will be going to the soup kitchen. And to, on Clovis's side, it will be going to the Boys and Girls Club of Fresno County. We want to do this every year to help raise money for our community. And FYI, Doug did say he will contribute, he will match it up to the first five hundred dollars. So, make sure you get that money in because Doug's going to match it for everybody. We didn't talk about it beforehand, but he did say it, so.
I probably deserve that.
Thank you. I hope to see you guys all there, and I appreciate the support.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. And how'd your team look this year?
Um, last year, we did lose to Clovis West by sixty, sixty, oh, sorry, Clovis West by sixty-eight points. Yesterday, we lost by twenty-five, so they're just as good, so that means we're better than last year, so hopefully, we're going to have a really good season.
Very good.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best.
The next speaker is Destiny Nava.
Morning, Destiny.
Morning. How are you guys?
Good. How are you today?
Sorry, I get a little nervous when I get up here. Good morning. My name is Destiny Nava, and I am a caregiver for SEIU. I've been doing this for about twenty-six years. And this is National Caregivers Month, but I'm here because we need a contract, and our contract is up. And I, we need a contract that reflects our work, and also, you know, people are struggling in our county, and we need, we need our contracts due, and we need a contract to have those livable wages. We need you all to invest in the work that we do so we can keep continuing to caring for people all over Kings. I myself also started out as a caregiver, so it's, it is very hard work. You're, you're a first responder to the person. You're a therapist at all times. I'm also the E-Board member, so I, I have a lot of calls that come in. But I care about the people, and I care about the workers that I have, and so I want to just make sure that we are, we have a contract that, you know, represents the work that we're doing. Ours has been due for a while, and I want to just make sure that we can get that, if you guys would help out with that.
Thank you, Destiny.
Thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful day.
Just checking, let's make a comment. Ma'am?
Yes.
Destiny?
Yes.
The, um, so can you ask your folks to send us something? Because nothing's been sent.
Yes, I will.
To say that the contract's been due for a while. That's not true.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. At this time, anybody else?
I don't have any other speaker cards, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised, but I understand CEO.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna move up item E-one from regular calendar and turn it over to Kiri Martinez at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, before your Board is a resolution to proclaim November sixteenth through the twenty-second as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week. For California counties, the clerk of the board satisfies numerous statutory and locally mandated requirements and serves as official record keeper of actions taken by each county Board of Supervisors. The clerk of the board profession is time-honored and vital component of effective transparent local governance. Every year, every year, the last week of November is dedicated recognizing the broad scope of services they provide. The clerk of the board and their respective office provides the highest integrity and respect for the public's business as they carry out the provisions of their role with a quiet, steadfast determination and always with great pride. Here in Kings County, the clerk of the board prepares and publishes agendas for the Board of Supervisors in accordance with legal requirements for public meetings, processes, legal publications, postings, and notices, records and publishes actions taken by the Board of Supervisors, produces summary action and minutes of all meetings, and assists the public participation in the Board of Supervisor meeting. The Kings County Clerk of the Board is also clerk to the Kings County Board of Equalization, California Public Finance Authority, California Community Housing Agency, and Mid-Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and the City Selection Committee, and provides support and guidance to staff for other appointed bodies within the county. In addition to providing copies of all records, including current and historical, that the clerk of the board is required to maintain, the clerk of the board also assists other departments, entities, and public with research and, and research and information, maintains official rosters for boards, commissions, and committees, and posts vacancy notices as part of the MADDI Act requirements. They receive and process claims, summons, and complaints against the county and provide reception. The Kings County Clerk of the Board maintains records for actions of the Kings County Board of Supervisors from nineteen, from eighteen ninety-three to present, and in two thousand twenty-four, completed a preservation project approved by the Board of Supervisors. The project is, preserves the original documents from the creation of the county through nineteen seventy-seven, taking them from decaying books to a museum preserved books in water and fire safe cases placed in the office along with having pages digitized and searchable to anyone on the county's archive website. The office was also involved in overseeing scanning projects of over four hundred boxes, boxes from the county's warehouse, with assistance of three extra help offices since working to digitize and migrate the data to a searchable program to bridge the gaps of digitized information from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-nine, which currently only exists on over twenty thousand microfiche in the office, opening up the option for allowing county staff to access them to the program ability to search the archives. The Board of Supervisor historically has had the clerk of the board position and one deputy clerk as staff to the five elected officials. In two thousand twenty-three, the Board took action to add a second deputy clerk and of the board position to the office. The Board would like to recognize Catherine Ventarella, clerk of the board, Diane Badashi, deputy clerk of the board, and Fran Lizziozza, deputy clerk of the board, and to recognize that among the three staff working within the Board of Supervisors, they combined over sixty-five years of service and dedication serving the citizens of Kings County. We want to thank them all for their tireless dedications.
One important part. You work, you have five different personalities.
Five?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're not. We are going to bring up another item at this time, not on the agenda. Kiri, you want to start it off?
Sure. I'm going to go under the unscheduled appearance.
Yes.
So, Kiri Martinez, I want to take a moment to invite Dave Robinson to the front. This will be his last Board of Supervisor meeting, and so we have a little gift that we wanted to present to him. We invited Melanie, his wife, to join us in this recognition, and I'm going to turn it over to Doug because he's going to give you all the gifts we got you.
Gifts?
I, I just want to say I agree with Catherine. There's multiple personalities, and I think Doug has like three.
Thank you. Today, you got a good one. Did you, did you get the memo? You're supposed to bring the Calbert.
I did not get that memo.
Oh, we got them for you.
We want you to come to the well so you can.
Somebody mentioned that to me this morning, and I left it in my office. On purpose.
Have those lots of Alberts. Happy you're fifteen years. Could have something to take home. He's got his cover. He's coming in a cowboy hat. We've got the county.
Check the brand.
I see. Thank you for your good spirit. Here we go. This is what, this is a clearly what you made here. You can clearly do this. They have it. Sheriff Tim, Jake, that's right.
Yeah.
That's the county feeling here.
I get dressed with what it's always. Yeah, that comes up too.
And we also, so. This is, you want to talk about this?
Uh, no, I, I think we better just leave that. District Attorney's not here, but you know, those, those colors have been associated with a gang here in Kings County. And so, now that you're a member of the Portuguese Gang Association, we want you to know that that could, could be trouble in some other state. So, if you have to, talk to, talk to John Devlin and just tell him it's Gateway or whatever. Yeah, tell him it's a computer. Yeah.
I did work at the game in like seven years, so I recognize the game.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
One of a kind, yeah. One of a kind guaranteed to be a family heirloom.
So, I met you eighteen.
Yeah.
Not anywhere else. And you pick your head up going like. For the jazz.
We do double.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, thank you for your, thank you. You're the senator.
Right? I've heard that a lot.
Then we have to.
Okay, what else?
The girl in the back. Okay, well, thank you for your. He has, he said great work of you, and I thought it was big, he started. Good. Why is it not showing?
She's here.
Yeah, she's right there.
So, a quick funny story. A couple of years ago, so my wife, Melanie, she's, she's been this riding with me together. We've been married ten years, together thirteen. And so, when you do the math, that's a long time when you're the sheriff. And so, a couple of years ago, she's like, hey, just so you know, I'm done going to events with you. And she said it in jest, but, so Doug ended up being my date at multiple events. Because we were always at the same event, so then that just turned into, hey, like, why don't we just ride together? Because like, we're showing up in the same places, and just like, didn't want to go with you.
I got three of the personalities apparently.
We have that event personality. It's been great. Thank you to the Board. I've never had, you know, more fun in my life, but obviously, stressful job, but it's been very rewarding as well. And to the staff that came on today, thank you. Just love being a county employee. I hope everybody who's a county employee goes the same way. And it's an amazing place to work, and I know the county's in great hands, so thank you.
All right, you made our doggy.
Thank you.
It's not worth up here, but the sheriff's flag is out of control.
Crazy games, you're crazy. I hope not, though. Just bigger, go bigger.
Can we take a picture? A picture, and then Melanie, can you come up here, and we'll all take a picture with the Board?
Okay.
You want to hold the sheriff? Oh, no, no, the other one, Woody.
I'm not big fan of this. Albert, because I thought he was funny. I'll go back and back. I'll need to.
There you go. I mean, I am an alternate.
Basically, Mel, this is tag, you're it. I am not involved anymore. Tap it out.
Thank you.
Okay. You got anything you want to say, Dave? No?
Nope.
Good.
Coming back for the button thing, so.
Oh, okay. Well, that's at the end. Come on, we'll sit down. Okay, if there's no more comments from the public, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A, approval of a closed session from Agenda Regular Meeting, November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is nothing to report from the regular meeting on November fourth.
Okay, report out of closed session from a regular special meeting on November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Likewise, nothing to report from that meeting, and I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
Any public comments? I always forget that part. Okay, item C, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Thayer. Any questions, the audience? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Usain.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes. All favor, one abstention. Thank you very much. Item D, approval of the minutes from special meeting, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions, the audience? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. Okay, five members agree. Next item would be item E, approval of the minutes from special meeting, November seventh, twenty twenty-five.
The movement, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Thayer. Any questions, the audience? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. Five in favor. Thank you very much. Move on now to consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question, requests additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken until after questions have been addressed and comments made, and the public has had an opportunity to comment on the consent counter items. What's the Board's pleasure? Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions, the audience? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. Very good. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go on the regular calendar. County Council, Lori Abadizian. Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you today is the County Executive Officer Employment Agreement. On October seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors approved an amendment to the Kings County Code of Ordinances, changing the management structure of the county from a county administrative officer, or CAO, of management style, to a county executive officer, or CEO model. The purpose of this item is to enter into a CEO employment agreement with current CEO, Kiri Martinez. The CEO is responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of all county departments under the Board of Supervisors jurisdiction and ensures efficient and accountable delivery of county services. The CEO agreement contains provisions governing the CEO's duties and obligations, compensation and benefits, performance evaluations, and termination and severance, as I will summarize below. The term of the agreement is for five years. The CEO must, among other things, perform these duties and functions of the CEO as set forth in the county ordinances, the job description, state law, et cetera. The agreement will be effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five, which is the beginning of a pay period, and the CEO shall be paid in salary band one, which is twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars monthly. That's per the county salary schedule, and shall move along the ten steps of the band annually until the maxed up upon successful evaluation each year. The CEO shall receive cost of living adjustments and the same vacation, sick time, and other benefits as other county unrepresented management employees. The Board of Supervisors shall review and evaluate the performance of the CEO on an annual basis. The CEO may be terminated or resign with or without cause, subject to specified advance notice, and will receive twelve months of severance if terminated without cause unless the term of the agreement is less than twelve months remaining, in which case severance will be equal to the remaining term of the agreement. This is pursuant to government code, including five, four, nine, five, three.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board?
Thank you, Counsel.
Go ahead, sir. No, you're.
I was just saying, thank you, Counsel, for getting this all put together and right and taken care of. Things went smooth, and I hold off on the motion for Rusty there.
No, just, not any questions, just a comment that it's, it's a long time coming in this county. It's great to see that, you know, the progression and supportive of, of the Board for the CEO position. As, as a longtime county employee, I cannot imagine being in your shoes and trying to, at, at that high of a level with, with, with the speed bumps of what a CAO model was, and so, good luck. And have full confidence in you, Kiri, and just look forward to, you know, the, the dynamic of what that change actually means for our county and those living here and our employees and the whole lot, so that, that's, that's all that's required. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Is that motion?
I will, I will make a motion to approve this presentation.
Motion by Supervisor Valley, second by Supervisor Thayer. Any questions, the audience? Any second thoughts? I mean, it's bad enough you got five board members. You got one with three personalities. That's eight, if I can do my math right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. We wish you all the best. Good luck to you. You love to speak, Renee?
No, I was, I was telling Lori, I was like, really nervous this morning, and I was like, gosh, my heart is racing. It's just, when it's about me, it's always like, but then my husband just texted me, and my dog just had a seizure, so I feel like that just took like the emotion out of it.
I'm sorry about that.
Is your dog okay? Do you got to go? Sure.
Okay, well, congratulations. We'll move on now to item B, Community Development Agency, and we have Noel here this morning. Morning, Noel.
Good morning, Supervisors. Noel Tomlinson, Planner with the Community Development Agency, here to present Kings County Development Code Text Change, number six, six, eight point two zero, which was introduced on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. The CDA received private industry interests to construct, maintain, and decommission a commercial solar facility and the general agricultural forty-acre minimum, AG forty Zone District. This type of use is allowable in the AG forty Zone District if it meets the requirements of Development Code Article eleven, Section one, 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 two, and subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. Development Code Section one, 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 two, B two, lists specific requirements that commercial solar projects must meet in the allowable ag zone districts. This Development Code Text Change will specifically amend Section one, 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 two, B two, A, which states where a commercial solar project must be located in reference to Figure RC thirteen, priority agricultural land of the twenty thirty-five Kings County General Plan. Currently, commercial solar in the allowed ag zone districts must be located on land designated as very low, low, or low-medium priority land, and medium priority can be. and medium priority can be considered under certain circumstances. This proposed Development Code Text Change would amend Section 1112B2A to allow commercial solar in the AG40 Zone District only, to additionally include areas designated as medium-high priority land. The AG40 Zone District is applied to rural areas of the county south of Kansas Avenue, excluding the urban fringe areas of Corcoran, the communities of Stratford and Kettleman City, and high-slope areas of the coast ranges. Historically, many of the lands in the AG40 Zone District have limited access to water with soils that are high in salinity, leading many landowners to follow their agricultural fields or use them for dry grazing. The proposed amendment would allow landowners in the AG40 Zone District only to potentially develop commercial solar on land designated as medium-high priority, while still protecting those lands that are designated as high priority. All other requirements would still need to be met, including the approval of a conditional use permit. This amendment would not apply to the AG20 or exclusive agricultural zone districts in the northern portion of the county, where most of the medium-high and high-priority lands are located, where landowners have increased access to water and the soil is of overall higher quality. The proposed changes will remain consistent with the goals and objectives of the Kings County General Plan. The Approval of Development Code Text Change Number 668.20 is exempt from CEQA review pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the CEQA Guidelines, and none of the special circumstances in Section 15300.2 apply. In addition, any uses allowed by this Development Code Text Change will be required to undergo their own individual CEQA environmental review determination through the conditional use permit application process. The Planning Commission received a staff report and conducted a public hearing on October 6th, 2025. No public testimony was received. The Planning Commission voted and adopted Resolution Number 2507, recommending that the board adopt Development Code Text Change Number 668.20 in the public interest. In November 4th, 2025, the board conducted a public hearing and introduced Ordinance 668-2-25, amending Development Code Section 1112B2A, and no public testimony was received. Staff recommendations are: Find that Development Code Text Change Number 668.20 is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline Section 15061B3, and none of the circumstances in 15300.2 apply. Find that Development Code Text Change Number 668.20 is consistent with the policies of the 2035 Kings County General Plan and Adopt Ordinance Number 668-2-25, amending Article 11, Section 1112B2A of the Kings County Development Code. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I have just two quick questions. This, and I might have missed it, is, is battery storage part of that?
So, usually battery storage will be incidental to commercial solar. Um, we do have, um, an allowance to develop, uh, battery storage separately just by itself, but it would not be a part of this Development Code Text Change.
Okay, and then in that, I guess, I don't know that it actually matters or not, but like in these areas that, that, that are designated, are there transmission lines?
So, there's like a 500 KB transmission line that runs along I-5 that would, is, I think, where most of the medium-high priority lands are located, kind of in that area?
That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions to the audience? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Good job, Noel. Congratulations. Uh, five in favor, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on now to item C, Human Resources, and we have... Good morning, Ashley.
Good morning.
What are you?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Ashley Hernandez, Human Resources Analyst. Um, I'm here today to recommend that the board authorize the Director of Human Resources and designated staff to sign this successor agreement with the Firefighters Association. Uh, the county's agreement with the Kings County Firefighters Association expired June 30th, 2025. Negotiations began in May and have been concluded in good faith. A successor agreement was reached between parties for an agreement between, beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027. In the first year of the agreement, employees will receive a salary increase of seven ranges effective November 10th, 2025. In the second year of the agreement, employees will receive a salary increase of three ranges effective July 6th, 2026. Other benefits included in the agreement also will become effective November 10th, 2025. The annual uniform allowance increased from $1,200 to $1,300. Longevity pay was modified from a single tier of 3% at 10 years to a multi-tier, which provides 2% for employees who have completed five years of continuous full-time service, 5% for employees who have completed 10 years of continuous full-time service, and 7.5% for employees who have completed 15 years of continuous full-time service in an allocated position. The deferred compensation matches increased from $700 to $1,200. Employees can also sell back 24 hours of accrued vacation in each fiscal year directly to their deferred compensation account. The memorandum of understanding was updated to incorporate all previously agreed modifications, as well as minor wording changes and other negotiated non-economic updates. All changes noted in this agenda are reflected as strikeout and bold in the high, um, and highlights to where they occurred. The total cost for the salary increases, uniform allowance adjustments, revised longevity, and deferred compensation matches is approximately $659,544 for the remainder of the fiscal year. Uh, the agreement was ratified by, by the association, and I recommend that the board authorize the Director of Human Resources and designated staff to sign the successor agreement with the Firefighters Association for a term beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions from the board? Any comments? What's really?
Mr. Chair, I just want to.
What are you thinking?
Yeah, nah, I just, I want to, I want to thank both, uh, staff and, uh, everyone at Negotiates, Negotiation Table and the Firefighters Association, uh, for getting this done. Um, I want the public to know how much we appreciate, uh, our county firefighters, even if some other folks don't. And, uh, this means a lot to get this done, and, and I hope we can move forward and continue to improve everything as we move forward. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? The motions? Second by Supervisor Thayer, second by Supervisor Valley. Any questions to the audience or comments? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd also like to thank the board, the association, and administration for the continued collaboration and support to this process. Thank you.
Hey, did you guys, Mr. Chair, did you guys, for the firefighters, you guys get your turnout ordered and replaced from the oil spill? That, that accident there on Highway 33 in Havanna last month?
Our department here, uh, not that I know of, I'm aware of, uh, but they do have their backup sets they'll go into. They carry two sets for something like that happens, and they'll go back and change their backups. And if they're, they're able to clean them, advanced cleaning on them, then they'll send them away to the company we use that cleans them, usually in hazardous material incidences like that. So.
Look like, sound like they, like, all those firefighters, uh, turnouts got ruined that day. I know there's big concerns. So, I know Kiriya was working, and the chief, and just hoping everything's going through quick.
It's actually pretty common, a lot of incidences. We get a lot of spills on us, and it, it's, we have them sent off and cleaned quite a bit. It's, it's common to go through several sets of turnouts and, and replacements too. So, yeah, unfortunately, they, the prices go up on those.
Was that about 7,000 a turnout?
Roughly, uh, yeah. And every, it seems like every year there's some new manufacturer that's created some new, uh, type of material that's supposed to benefit. And so, the industry tends to follow that trend. And then, um, yeah, so, but yeah, it's, it's, it's common to destroy a pair on incidents like that, especially hazardous materials. It's, it's, uh, a lot of times they can't, they can't advance cleaning, so it gets, has to get replaced.
Thanks, sir.
But, uh, uh, while I'm here, just wanted to say, uh, everything went smooth with the, with the negotiations. I want to thank, uh, the county and, uh, the firefighters are, are happy. What we're seeing is, uh, there's a a smaller pool of people who want to be firefighters. And so, as all the local governments are trying to snag those people, it's, it's, this helps us be into that pool of competitive with the other agencies. And, uh, so, this will help a lot. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Carolyn, you got another item here? How are you today?
Good morning. I'm good, thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Carolyn Lee, Human Resources Director. I'm here to request approval of the salary resolution update, which if approved would become effective November 10th, 2025. The salary resolution update includes MOU changes, memorandum of understanding changes, uh, for the fire association that were just approved by the board, and changes to Section 3 to establish practices for the new, uh, county executive officer, which is the CEO model. The changes to Section 3 gives the authority of the CEO to adjust department head salaries within the salary band on a new 10-step system for non-elected county officials. In May, uh, 2024, the board received the count, completed countywide classification and compensation study, investing in approximately $7 million in the county workforce for implementation alone. The study provided adjustments for most classifications. However, department head salary bands were not addressed at this time. With, uh, a study completed, the CEO has evaluated opportunities for strategic investment in county leadership programs or positions, many of which have not received any merit-based adjustments since their date of appointment. Since 1993, the department heads have been, uh, compensated under a salary band model that placed them at the time of appointment with minimal opportunity to advance within the band unless approved by the board or under board request in open session. While department heads have received cost of living adjustments over time, there has not been, uh, a mechanism for merit-based progression or progression along the band that is consistent. This structure has led to some stagnation within leadership classifications, as compensation has not reflected tenure, experience, or performance. County administration conducted an extensive review of salary practices for appointed and elected department heads across other counties. They submitted about 31 public records requests. The county selector were the Coffin Associates comparable counties, which were Fresno, Humboldt, Madera, Mariposa, Merced, Santa Soss, Sutter, Tulare, and Talon, Talonami, uh, Talonami Counties. Twalami, I cannot say it, sorry. We'll go with that. Um, the remaining 21 counties categorized as California State Association of Rural Counties, including Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, Calusa, Del Norte, El Dorado, Glen, Enyo, Lake, Lassen, Mendocino, Modoc, Mono, Nevada, Plumas, San Benito, Sierra, Siskiyou, Tahama, Trinity, and Yuba Counties. Most county departments, uh, determined elected officials and appointed salaries through board-adopted resolutions, with 17 counties adopting an approach similar to the 10-step system, including Humboldt, Fresno, Mariposa, Twalami, uh, Sutter, Alpine, Calaveras, Calusa, El Dorado, Glen, Mendocino, Nevada, San Benito, Mono, Siskiyou, Tahama, and Yuba County. Three counties, Amador, Enyo, and Plumas, set their elected official salaries by ordinances. Madera County stands out as the only county in the survey that ties its elected official salaries to a percentage of the California Superior Judicial Council salaries. Additionally, Humboldt is the only county surveyed that has a tense, uh, has a step increase structure where elected officials move up one step every 26 pay period, which is equal to one year, uh, while in paid status. The county currently has 20 department heads, 17 of whom are appointed. Appointed department heads may advance within their designated step bands annually upon receiving a successful performance evaluation until reaching the top step of their band. The existing county established bands remain unchanged and continue to reflect the same structure as previously adopted. There are currently four bands. The breakdown is provided in the agenda item, as well as within the salary resolution. By implementing this 10-step, this new 10-step system, the county will be better equipped to address longstanding challenges with vacancies, attrition, and hard-to-fill leadership classifications within its workforce. By aligning, aligning employee compensation with experience and performance, the county can ensure this workforce remains committed to providing exit, providing excellent public service to the community. The board's approval of the recommended actions will allow the, will allow the county to, uh, move forward with this monumental initiative. Additionally, elected department heads will also be placed in a 10-step, uh, system in the band by recommendation of the CEO and approved by the Board of Supervisors upon election to the position. Each year in November, the elected official shall move to the next step on the band. Along with the elected official salary and benefits for the CEO will be included in the employment contract, which was, um, approved by the Board of Supervisors. Elected department heads, including the Assessor Clerk Recorder, District Attorney and Sheriff, and non-elected department heads will be placed on the step identified by the CEO in the newly established 10-step system. The Assessor Clerk Recorder will be placed on Band 2, Step 5. The District Attorney will be placed on Band 2, Step 9, and the Sheriff will be placed on Band 2, Step 10. The fiscal impact of these changes is estimated at $94,227 for the remainder of the fiscal year, consisting of $79,800 from the general fund and $14,427 from non-general fund sources. These costs will be absorbed within the respective budget units. The estimated annual cost for year two is $206,000, $151,217 of general fund impact, and $55,675 of non-general fund impact. Annual costs will depend on staffing changes and step progression. By year three, if current department heads are retained, cost growth will slow as more positions reach the top step, gradually reducing the annual rate of increase. All changes are reflected as strikeouts and bolds within the drafted salary resolution. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions or comments? You want her to repeat that?
Uh, please don't.
Twalami.
Twalami.
No questions, just a couple, just a, a couple of statements. One, two, just clarifying this. It's the elected officials, not the five board members.
Correct.
This.
Elected department heads.
Elected department heads, just, just for the record. Um, and just, it's, it's just another, this is just another good piece, a long time coming for, we have great department heads in this county, but it's another long piece that really ties into, to the CEO model, because as this 10-step goes, is, 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 as department heads have the opportunity to hit 10 steps across the course of 10 years, um, it, it, not that they're not already sharp, but it forces them to remain sharp. When you become stagnant in a salary, and, and you're just going to float there forever, and, and, and as, as cost of living goes up and you get those little increments, it, 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 it can, it can create stagnitation in our department. And again, I think it's just another good move. It's a good move, uh, for this county. It's great for our employees, our department heads. It's, 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 I'm proud to sit on this board with these other gentlemen, um, who've helped to, to navigate this, um, because I think overall it is, it is great for everyone who lives within the boundaries of Kings County, travels through Kings County, or works here, uh, for our county. And with that, that's, that's just all I had to say, Mr. Chair.
You're good. Any other comment?
Ms. Quick. I, I, I just believe there always has to be an incentive to better yourself. Whoever you are, whatever you're doing, there's got to be an incentive. So, I, I, I'm supportive of this.
Any other comments? Motion? Motion by Supervisor Thayer, second by Supervisor Robinson. Any questions to the audience? My comment would be, the leadership under our new CEO model has helped bring this to the forefront. So, thank you, Kiriya, for what you've done, and your ideas, and your vision. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes. Five in favor, thank you very much. Next item.
The next item is for the board's information only. Um, it is for the board to receive a report on the suspension of competition of the undersheriff approved by me and the appointment of Marius Barcassiano, better known as Chris Barcassiano, uh, to the undership, um, undersheriff position effective November 10th, 2025, pay period 24, 2025. The undersheriff, um, position is an at-will position. This position assists with planning, organizing, managing, and providing direction and oversight for all functions and activities of the sheriff's office, including law enforcement and corrections programs of the sheriff's office. Chris has over 25 years of experience with the sheriff's office, starting as a reserve detentions deputy on June 5th, 2000. He was hired full-time as detentions deputy on November 27th, 2000, and promoted to detentions deputy two on July 9th, 2001. He promoted to deputy sheriff on December 8th, 2003, after graduating from the police academy in November 2003. He promoted to deputy sheriff two on December 6th, 2004, and he continued promoting through the ranks, including to a senior deputy sheriff on June 30th, 2008, a sheriff sergeant on March 31st, 2014, and a sheriff's commander on July 26th, 2021. He promoted to his current position of assistant sheriff on December 9th, 2024. And in September 2008, Chris, um, graduated from Union Institute and University with a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice management. He also possesses a management certificate issued by the Peace Officer Standards and Training, uh, post on July 27th, 2023, fulfilling all the requirements of the undersheriff position. Kings County Personnel Rule 4060 allows for competition for a position to be suspended by the Director of Human Resources when the position being requested to fill is for an assistant department head level in nature. This action must be reported to the board at the next regular, um, meeting. Therefore, this is information only, uh, to report to the board. However, before I conclude, I would like to introduce, um, Chris and the sheriff to come up for any comments that they'd like to introduce.
This is your last duty.
I got one more after this.
I do? Okay. Second last duty.
Right. I might just come back next Tuesday just for fun. Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. It's an honor to be here with Chris. Chris B. is what we call him in the department, because 99.9% of us can't pronounce his name, his first name or his last name. So, um, so Chris B. is what it is. I don't know that that's on any legal document anywhere, but you know, it is what it is. Chris has a great. His first name or his last name. So, um, so Chris B is what it is. I don't know that that's on any legal document anywhere, but you know, it is what it is. Chris has a great story. About how he even came to the United States and actually left the United States and went to Mexico. To re-enter the United States to become a United States citizen. It's pretty fascinating. If you, if you catch him on the side one time at one of your events or ask him to tell you the story, it's just absolutely fascinating. And his commitment to this county, um, and the United States of America is just unwavering. And so I'm proud to be here today. Uh, as one of my last official things to promote Chris to undersheriff and he'll do an outstanding job. He literally has his hand in everything that goes on around the department day in and day out. And I just really, Chris, appreciate all your hard work over the years. So thank you. He's going to do his speech in Romanian.
Buena dimienza, bien van gasi.
I don't think that was good.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, CEO Martinez, and Sheriff. Today feels surreal. Uh, when I uh. Pin on my badge for the first time twenty years ago, I never imagined I'd be standing here accepting the honor and responsibility of serving as your undersheriff. This promotion is one of the greatest privileges of my life, and I am deeply humbled by the trust you have placed in me, Sheriff. First, I want to thank Sheriff David Robinson. Sheriff, your leadership has been a gold standard, steady and always focused on the people we serve. You've been more than a boss. You've been a mentor and a friend, and I will carry the lessons you have taught me. Every single day in my new role. To incumbent Sheriff Dave Potnam, congratulations. I am proud to stand with you and even prouder to serve as your undersheriff. I promise you my loyalty, my work ethic, and my commitment to making your vision for this department a reality. To my fellow deputies, sergeants, commanders, and every civilian member of this agency, thank you. You are the heartbeat of this organization. I stood shoulder to shoulder with you in a jail, on patrol, and during some of the toughest callouts. Any of us will ever face. Your courage, professionalism. And your dedication to the people of Kings County inspires me every day. I am honored to continue serving alongside you, and I will always have your backs. To the board of supervisors and CEO Martinez. Thank you for your confidence in me and for your unwary and support of public safety in Kings County. I look forward to working closely with each and one of you. In order to keep our community safe. And finally, to my wife who is here today. My partner and the love of my life. Thank you. None of this would be mean anything without you by my side. You held our family together through long shifts, missed holidays, and too many nights wonder if I come home safe. I will tirelessly work to keep Kings County Sheriff's Office the very best it can be. Uh, for our deputies and for every resident that we sworn to protect. Thank you all. God bless you all and God bless Kings County.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is information only, but does the board have anything I'd like to say?
Just, just one comment, Mr. Chair. Big, big, big fan of, of, of Chris B. Um, anybody that's listening in this audience, a, a, a number of years ago, Chris gave me a book. Um, called I Must Betray You by Ruda Sepatias, I think is how you say it. Um, but from, but from our undersheriff who grew up in communist Romania. And somehow escaped that and is, and is serving as the undersheriff in this county. This is a, it was a great book to read, although it. You know, it's not a true story. It's still a portion of Chris's story and, and I already like the guy. Um, but after reading that book, even, even more so of what his commitment is to our community and his family and Jen sitting out here by Mel and. And just super, super stoked for you and, and our county's in good hands with. With Chris and with the Chris and Dave show, the other Dave show now. So. Anyway, congratulations, Chris.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks.
Supervisor Robinson.
Chris, I want to just. You know, a million years ago, I taught in Prague, so I really appreciate your story. People keep saying, have you, have you heard Chris's story? And no, it's, what's Chris's story? Uh, amazing, amazing. And, and, and you're a true symbol uh, of, of a person who worked hard to be a citizen here. So I'm grateful. Thank you. And, and we appreciate your service.
Uh, Chris, looking forward to working with you. Uh, I've known you for fifteen, almost sixteen years, and uh, you've been at my house. You've had detail with the. Events I've had out there. So I know I'm in good hands when you're, whenever you're around. And I hope that your leadership trickles down to the next generation of uh, officers. So thank you. Looking forward to it. Okay, information only, so we won't have to vote on this. We'll move over to IT, John Devlin.
Morning, John. Morning, Chairman, fellow board members. I just wanted to touch on a few things before I start. Uh, back on the multiple personalities, I want to point out that uh, Joe Nevs has two personalities. He is Joe Nev's longstanding supervisor, but he's also Santa Claus. Don't tell any kids. Um, and I also wanted to say thank you to Kira. Um, there were two previous CAOs. And I pointed out the problem with the salary bands with department head, and I kept seeing these young people get in, realizing they could never promote and they'd leave. Um, but I want to applaud Kira because she actually did something about it and your board, of course, too. But I, I think she deserved more kudos just for that. All right, now on to this important item in front of you. Um, this is about the dot gov web address name. Back in April of twenty four, the board adopted a new domain name of countyofkingsca.gov. In order to comply with a federal mandate. This was subsequently put into place, but further direction was given to find a shorter name. Preferably kingscounty.ca.gov. Um, there is no fiscal impact. And uh, the background, which I did read back in April, but the federal government instructed that all local municipalities transition to a dot gov domain name. An email address to ensure citizens that they are interacting with government agency representatives. This is a lot about the elections process that you're really talking with the elections or government agency. Additionally, starting in twenty twenty five, the federal grant applications would no longer be accepted by government agencies unless submitted by a dot gov email address. This was set in motion by Senate Bill two seven four nine, the dot gov act of twenty nineteen. The state of California passed Assembly Bill sixteen thirty seven in twenty twenty three that mandated that all California cities and counties. Transition to the dot gov domain name and email address by January first of twenty twenty nine. To this end, the Information Technology Department IT notified administration of the ruling and worked on the transition plan. In April, the IT procured the domain name countyofkingsca.gov, which was approved by the board. At the time, the new domain name was adopted, the board had asked IT to look for a shorter domain name, preferably kingscounty.ca.gov. IT had asked the state of California if the county could have kings.ca.gov or kingsco, short for county.ca.gov, but were denied. IT had previously asked the federal registrar for kings.gov and were also denied. The state informed IT that county must follow the name of the county. Thus, kingscounty.ca.gov was approved by the state. It should be noted that the previous county domain names will still redirect users to the new county domain name, and I have a slide that'll explain that. Oh, you can go back to the, I'll, I'll do the slideshow later. Um, email addresses are defined as prefix at suffix. Email will still be delivered to all email names, no matter which suffix is used, which is the back end of the, after the app. However, in order for email sent out to have a specific suffix, IT must set up each user or group of users. For instance, if there's one person in admin who applies for federal grants, IT could set that user up as, as user at kingscounty.ca.gov. And all emails sent and received for that user would have at kingscounty.ca.gov as the email address. And or if an entire department wishes to move, that can be accomplished. All the other email suffixes would still work inbound, but users can only have one outbound suffix. Um, if a user seldom applies for federal grants, they could simply put user at kingscounty.ca.gov on the forms they fill out. At the federal agency and the email will still get to them, but if they respond to that email or by email to that agency. They would have their old suffix of at co.kings.ca.us unless IT changes it for them. But if they were to apply and not get it, they wouldn't have to worry about it. Please note that all county addresses should fully transition to a dot gov address by January first, twenty twenty nine. In order to comply with California's AB sixteen thirty seven. This resolution has been approved by county council as deformed. And now I'll show you the slideshow here. All right. Go ahead, next one. All right, the following is an overview. All right, next. Excellent.
Let me call IT.
I guess. Whoop, nope. Going. More, one more. There we go. Our current domain names was county or co.kings.ca.us, which we've had for quite some time. Um, we also had gotten uh, countyofkings.com. Um, and it's a good idea to keep that, and I'll explain that a little bit later. Um, and we also had gotten in January of twenty four, uh, or, um, yeah. We were, we got in January, but we, your board approved it in July of countyofkingsca.gov. It's a lot to say fast. Um. So the, the next slide. The new proposed domain name is kingscounty.ca.gov. Um, when we asked the state, remember they said that you had to have county? And they said, because TulareCounty.ca.gov and San Luis Obispo, they weren't nice enough to say just slow county.ca.gov. Um, so that's keeping what their standard, that's what they want all the, the counties to move to. So, and that's what we're trying to do here, keep with what they're trying to do. All right, next slide. And these are the domain names that we tried to get, which I mentioned in the letter. Kings.gov, that would have been nice and short, but there's quite a few Kingses out there, including in New York. Uh, kings.ca.gov, which was denied, and kingsco.ca.gov. So those ones are all denied. And then, uh, the next slide. These are examples of inbound email. So you've got user at co.kings.ca.us, which would still go into the user's email box like always. Um, if a user somehow typed user at countyofkings.com, because it's registered, it'll still go into your email box. Same thing with at countyofkingsca.gov, it would still go into your email box. And kingscounty.ca.gov currently also goes into the user's email box, and that's because we had to use it or else you lose it. So we went ahead and activated that, even though we haven't made that public. Um, so any one of those email addresses, if you put john.devlin at any of those names, it'll still wind up in my email box. Next slide. Now outbound mail, only one domain name can be active for each user. And currently that is at co.kings.ca.us for all users. And we did do a test just to make sure it would work, and we changed one user to send out an email, and it did send out on the new domain name. So we know that that works. Um, and we changed it back because this hasn't been adopted, obviously. Um. I kind of covered this next one about the internet domain names about applying for federal grants. Um, but. Okay, if you could skip to the website, a similar slide.
Does that mean what you just said, we can't apply for a federal grants without the proper domain name?
Yeah, the federal government made it so where if you don't have a dot gov address, you can't, you can't receive federal grants. So. But it's whoever applies. So let's just say I was applying for a federal grant. I could list on the form that my email was whatever at dot gov. And then if they approved it. And I try to reply by email. Um, I'd have to change my email address to a dot gov. Otherwise, they won't recognize you. We, we have the, yeah, we have the, let me make sure I got it. Countyofkingsca.gov. That's currently is a legitimate one. Um, that's the one that your board approved in twenty twenty four. Um, so what we did is we got the new proposed one. Of, get, these get really easy to mess up, kingscounty.ca.gov, which is slightly shorter. And I think that's how most people refer to us. They don't say, I live in county of Kings. They say, I live in Kings County. So I think it'll be easier for users to understand.
Federal government got anything better than they do in a mess with our.
I, like I said, this is all generated out of the elections department.
And how long could we ignore this? Cause.
Till January of twenty twenty nine. And then by the state law.
December of twenty twenty eight. Cause this right, I'm serious, Mr. Chair, I mean, so our social media is county of Kings, California. For a reason, because we got Kings County in New York. Which, if you Google that, it will say that's the most prominent Kings County in the United States of America. We have a King County in Washington. And um, we went over this a couple of years ago in the pandemic when we were, we were in there. The um, so are we going to have to change our social media? That's just now starting to pick up, still getting on Instagram and.
Well, you can change it and you don't have to change all the stuff you've already done. And the reason that we have this time to do it by January first of twenty twenty nine. It's so that people can change, let's say a department wants to change all at once. Let's say elections would just pick on them. But since they deal with this, uh, with the feds a lot and the state, they could, they as a department could switch all their users over to the new domain named at, at dot gov. And then all their outbound email would also say that. But all their old email addresses would still go into their inbox. They're not going to lose that. All your forwarded email, if you want to call it that.
Then when you, um. If you go to, uh, see now I'm already confused, which is the one that you want?
That's the one I had right now.
County of Kings.
We, we want to, we want to switch to kingscounty.ca.gov.
Yeah, so I just Googled it and you're gonna, you have. Kings, you have kings.gov is already a dom, a domain. And then you have kingscity.com. Um, I, I think that, that California, the way, uh. Just, just helps to separate us from it. I'm, I'm not understanding why this is gonna, I think it's gonna be harder for people to, uh. Easier for people to make a mistake when they're trying to, uh, contact us, even, even when we're at CSAC, people joke about it. And, and um. Confuse Kings County in the conversation with these other. Um, ones I already mentioned. I mean, is this something that, that's already on your agenda right now? Or can we deal with this later?
We could. It just shortens the timeline for departments to transition if we decide to go that way. Cause this gives them the, the longest lead time. Um, so that they can transition their letterhead, their business cards, so they don't have to do it all in one fell swoop if they don't want to. But that's the reason to give them longer term to do it. Uh, and it's in keeping with what the state's mandating, basically, that when you switch to a dot gov, they want to have your name, the county name. And then the word county. And then dot ca.gov, that identifies you as part of the California state and then part of the government. So that, that's why they decided to go this route. It's up to your board. I'm just explaining how we did it. Um, and the last direction that we got was to receive a shorter name, and this is shorter, and it's keeping. County of Kings is a little longer to type in than just Kings County.
So, yeah, thank you, John. Thanks for that clarification. Little bit long. Uh, we just basically changed our. Last of our email to County of Kings. What we, what we going to?
Kingscounty.ca.gov, if your board would, if it approves it.
That's the one we need, right?
That's the one we'd like to have.
That's the one we're gonna go to.
Yep, and then that way we can start advertising that and all the old email addresses and website addresses would still forward to this new.
This a little bit, so. Any questions from the board? Any comments? Move by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Nevs. Any questions in the audience? Everybody understand that? Can you guys repeat it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I support this. Dave Robinson. Make it happen. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Valley, but. This needs to happen because co.kings.ca.us, I was on the phone yesterday trying to explain that to somebody.
Yeah.
How to type that in. Let's just do this. And with three hundred and fifty employees, we need time to implement these kinds of things. So thank you, John.
That's the same with, uh, uh, when I worked for the assemblywoman, that, that's the way our emails were, I'd say, all of that. So I.
And it probably has something to do with spam and being frauded. So you have to have dot gov on there, correct?
Yeah, and the unfortunate thing is we moved to that. Um, current one, county or co.kings.ca.us, because that was another mandate that we're running out of email address and, and everybody had to switch to that. Now they've decided we're gonna switch.
So if I run a business card, I put the new one on there, correct?
If you approve this, we can put it into place, well, actually in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I want a new business card, and if I vote yes.
You want to put your picture on them?
And, and thank you, Nev.
Oh, thank you.
I'll get them for you before twenty twenty nine.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna grant the sheriff's last respectful wish. And vote yes.
Well, we have a motion in a second, and so Madam Clerk, any, audience has already spoken. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Yes, and I want a grand jury investigation on.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you, John, for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now. We have. We have one item we, we didn't vote on. We're gonna go back to it right now, and it's gonna be Administration, Carrie Martinez, and this is gonna be adopting a resolution proclaiming November sixteenth through twenty second as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors week. Do we have any comments from the board? We already did the presentation. Anything, the audience? Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Need a vote first.
You need a motion, right? One of those things. I'm all confused about the .gov. Motion, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Very good. Five in favor. Thank you very much. We're gonna go on now to item number two, Administration, Carrie Martinez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carrie Martinez. So before your board, on November seventh, the board approved the appointment of Sheriff Dave Putnam effective November twenty four, twenty twenty five as the sheriff. And due to that action, we actually need to do his compensation. So at this time, before your board is a request to set the compensation of Dave Putnam as Kings County Sheriff effective Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty seven per month. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Seriously, does this take into account the action earlier? Does it affect this? Or it's, it's a higher amount now, right?
So at the ti- the change that have occurred today with the step ranges, it was still effective for Dave Robinson, because he's still the current sheriff. This action item is a different salary for Dave Putnam. However, Dave Putnam will now be in the new step model, so he will automatically annually move along the steps. And I have discussed this with Mr. Putnam. He is aware of the changes and is, is good with the changes.
Okay, so I just wanted to take care of it all in one swoop, but we had it raised just right now. It's good, okay.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
This motion by Supervisor Valley.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Thayer. Any question, audience?
Last one, I promise. Not really a question, just a comment. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff for six more days. And, you know, Dave and I have talked a lot of, we've talked a lot over the last fifteen years. I, I appointed Dave to my Assistant Sheriff in two thousand and eleven when I took office. He was one of my first promotions that I made. So obviously, we worked together for many, many years before he retired and moved on to be the chief, and then the chief. And the last couple of weeks have been awesome, working with him again, and, and I know that we're in good hands. And I just, with everything that's gone on the last couple of weeks, I just absolutely appreciate the board and your attention to this. And so I wanted to say thank you, and to Dave, congratulations, brother. I appreciate you.
I gave, I gave you a big shout out on the, my Great Day Morning Show segment last week. That's it.
Sure. Sheriff Putnam? We gotta get this on record.
Thank you for the trust in me. I'm really looking forward to get started. My undersheriff didn't write me a speech today, so I just, you know, looking forward to get started. I'm hoping to do swearing in next Monday, hopefully in here about nine AM if we can have this building. And thanks for the trust and confidence. Can't wait to get started. Very excited. And congratulations to Dave. Thanks for the trust.
Do you need any boxes to get?
No, no, no. I think we're good on that. He's just, you know.
Is he taking stuff out, or he's just sitting there like he owns the place?
He owns it as long as he want, until he is out of here, he owns it, and I'm here to support him with whatever. If he needs me to carry boxes, we're, we're here for him, so.
Hey, I can be there at five oh one.
On Monday at five oh.
Out of the office.
We'll, we'll, we'll report back Monday at five oh one and tell you how clean it, the office is. Uh, thank you so much. Thanks for the confidence. Looking forward to working with everybody. We, we've been around each other for a long time. It's not gonna take long to get back on, up to speed, and, and thank you for the confidence.
So very good. Thank you. Now remind me, did we vote on that?
Add a motion.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs. Joe Nevs. Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you as well, and you and Chris. And so always, and also wish the best to the Sheriff Robinson, and thank you for your service. Been great, so. So the party is Friday night, so everybody bring a box. So you have boxes put up in. You need, you need a container to put everything in, in your house, or you got room, or what? Okay, you had to rent a truck.
Good, we're gonna get there.
Okay.
Do a lot of stuff over thirty plus years.
Yes, I bet, I bet you have. Okay, we'll go on now to the next item, which is Board Member Comments or Announcements. Supervisor Nev, you want to start it off?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Attended the two thousand and twenty five Multi-County Suicide Prevention Summit. That was an online on the sixth. A special meeting was held at Kings Wasting Recycling on the sixth also. And then we also had a special meeting at Southport Kings. So it was a busy day. The American Legion Breakfast was held on the seventh, announced Lamar College Volleyball on the seventh as well. Then transitioned over to Kalinga to announce the football game on the eighth, which was the sophomore game, and got through that pretty well. Attended the Lamar Rotary Crab Feed. Thank you, Alex, wherever Alex is. He already left. Uh, they did a great job. Attended the Veterans Day Memorial at the Tank Ceremony on the eleventh. Commander Greg Woods retired, was the keynote speaker. Also visited the Veterans Day Celebration at the Hanford Civic, and then announced the Lamar Veterans Parade in Lamar. The Lapino Appeal started on the twelfth, and on just a couple of days, I'll never get back. Announced the Lamar College Volleyball Game on the twelfth, which is the last one of the season. Attended the Kings EDC Annual Meeting on the thirteenth. Thank you for that. Um, and then transitioned from volleyball to basketball on the fourteenth. Um, on the fifteenth, the Palace had a craft show out there with local vendors, and it was very well attended, very nice. Picked up soapish from Lamar Trinity Hall Association on the fifteenth, and then attended the Homeless Coalition Meeting on the seventeenth. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Thayer, where you been?
I've been here. Been here on the county complex quite a bit, along with Joe. Have some hours of our lives we can't get back. If that's okay, that's, that's what we, we're called to do. But, um, going back to, to our last board meeting on the fourth, um, um, actually during the middle of the meeting, I don't know if any of you others got any, uh, of these messages, but apparently the City of Hanford put on their agenda that, for that evening, they, um, kind of a cross, crosstown valley corridor that would tie the City of Hanford out to the, the future high-speed rail station. But the best I can tell is that kind of the map overlay they had showed residential streets and new commercial buildings and that kind of thing out there currently in the county. Um, there was rumors that they were, um, getting rid of Kit Carson School and, and annexing all of this, and it just, it just wasn't true. It's just, it was just an overlay showing a picture of what the, the future potential of that area could look like if and when an annexation, and if and when the station ever gets built out there. And anyway, that, that, that took up a significant portion of the later part of my day that Tuesday. Um, and then Thursday of, of that same week, sat with Kings Waste and Recycle Authority Meeting. Uh, I think Supervisor Nev was there as well, and, and, and got some things moving forward out there. Um, also during this, this last two weeks, had a meeting with our County Council, with Carrie, also with Doug, met with other dairymen throughout the county, just trying to get a better understanding of, of our dairy element, and how it impacts dairies in our county. And so getting a pretty good education on it. Um, Friday the seventh, my wife and I and a group of friends attended the KCao Monte Carlo Night. If you've ever had the opportunity to do that, it was a pretty good event. I was thoroughly impressed, even dressed up. So if you see me on Facebook, I don't dress up. I just do not do that, but I did for that, and it was, it was pretty cool. Um, and then last Wednesday, my wife and I also had the honor to, uh, have Sheriff Robinson and Mel and Dave and Lucy in our house, and just celebrated. Celebrated the, the retirement of Sheriff Robinson and the appointment of Dave Putnam. And, and we've, we were, we served together for many years, thanks to the sheriff, and just really Dave shout out back out to you again. I know, I know future Sheriff Putnam, you know, has the same, the same sentiments as I do, that, that thank you for your trust in us, and thank you for, uh, thank you for the years of mentorship and leadership and, and opportunities. I know that Kim and I are grateful for it. And we've, we've established resident, or we've established relationships throughout the state of California, across this country because of, of those appointments to the, to that position as, as your second command, and thank you for that, and the best of luck. Uh, when your first purse check comes, the remainder stress that you have is gonna go out the door. And then I'll, I'll close with a couple more things here. This last Thursday, had a, had the opportunity to meet with the new city interim city manager, Chris Tavarez. Nice gentleman, got, got to know him a little bit better, and, and City of Hanford looks like they're in good position with him at the helm. And then Friday morning, I attended virtually a four-county region meeting. I think Matt, I don't know if Matt's still in here or not. With our four-county region on, I don't know how best to describe, a green energy coming back into this county. Still have a lot of questions. Like, we closed it with a, a question that I brought to, to the group of, of, just feedback I get from different members of the community of, of, you know, should this county take part and move into that? Like, what, what is it, what, what, what do we get out of it? What does our constituents get out of it? And I made sure there were a couple of state officials, secretary-level people that were online, and just really wanted to put it out there that, that, that the people that live in this county are concerned that, that their power bill keeps going up. You know, both the SCE side and, and the PG and the sides of these counties. And, and we sit on these committees in hopes to, um, bring a change that can impact the lives of everyone living here. And so that's kind of the hope of it. And it's, I'm not overly confident that that is ever gonna happen, but nevertheless, um, those people who have solar, who've put solar, who've invested in solar, are probably in the same shoes that I have, I am, that, that you go through or four years without having a solar bill, and all of a sudden, things change in Sacramento, and you start to get, you start to get billed for the power um, that you're using, and you're no longer getting benefits of the solar that you have on your, on your home, on branches or whatever. So, um, anyway, that was a four-county region. I made some of those statements. I don't know if they were popular or not, but it's just speaking from the heart. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Valley.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Chair, well, going into Veterans Day, I got pretty busy. I started Friday, September seventh at, with the invite of Southern Cal Edison for their multicultural event in Tulare. I was asked to sit on a panel along with Supervisor Edible, and, and another lady, I can't remember her name, but she did a good job uh, there as well. So it was a good event. Then the next day, I was a speaker for Vice Mayor Pat Nolan's Annual Veterans Lunch. And the day after that, well, uh, we went, well, on Monday, we went, and, um, we raised a new flag that I was able to get from the county. I want to thank Carrie for helping with that. We had a flag raising ceremony at Gateway Park by the Five Porches of Freedom. There's a brand new flag hanging right now that, uh, that came out of the county. And so, um, spent the last few days, it was brand new, but I'm sure turning it up right now, but.
Did you ever get the one from Valdile yet? That's open, they're gonna fly it and bring it down.
I see. Um, but thanks for reaching out to me. Um, and then, uh, so we did that, and then on Veterans Day, we had our second tradition of inviting veterans down to Five Porches of Freedom for a laying of the roses uh, by the active, not active, the veterans who are still alive here with us, we invite them to come down. You know, Veterans Day is about celebrating veterans who are still here, and a lot of Memorial Days for the passing of our veterans. So we honored them. I want to thank Laura Brown from JG Boswell Companies, their second year sponsor, knows roses, about ten dozen roses she brings. So thank you, Laura. Then right after that, I drove to Lamar, as a last-minute invite. Their keynote speaker had canceled, and Lamar Road Lee was looking for a veteran to come down and speak, so I jumped right in the car. I got a call from Gunny Jesus Garcia. I think a lot of people know him. He owns Newman Photography. I served with him for a while in the Marine Corps, thirty days. He was the recruiter and vice cellist. And I'd applied to come home for thirty-day recruiting duty, second, get the points I needed to pick up the rank of corporal. And so that's how I got to know Gunny. So I can't tell him, so I've read it over. Did that, and then, um, lastly, Operation Gobble, Monday and Tuesday. I want to thank the clerks for all the letters. They do the hard part. They write all the letters, about a thousand letters this year, and print in the dates, the times, the locations. They get them out to the people that come pick up those letters, and the community leaders who pass them out in Avenue, Corkland, Home Gardens. Uh, we do one with Jose Ramirez in Stratford, um, and of course, hometown of Corkland. So also want to thank the sheriff for helping, um, again, and we're gonna have some turkeys to pick up at Costco. I scored another pallet of turkeys yesterday. And that'd be a good reserve to, uh, because I think we're gonna get hit pretty hard this year. Everybody is. KCO's been doing theirs. Anyone who's doing, um, um, turkey distributions are just getting hit hard right now. Uh, lastly, thank you, Sheriff, as well. Appreciate all your leadership. I told the story before, but for the, for the, uh, anyone who hasn't heard it, the first time I met Sheriff Robinson is when he came to my home in Corkland, he served me a subpoena, because I kept, I kept ignoring the invites to appear before the grand jury my first year in office. And I think it was on Christmas Eve, and he's, he said he could go home as soon as he found me, and I said, well, here's my address, get over here so he can go home. So that was a good way to beat him. But thank you, Sheriff. Good luck in your retirement.
Very good. Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, Wednesday, November fifteenth, attended a closed special board meeting with supervisors. Also attended the Armona General Plan Meeting to discuss priorities for two thousand and fifty with Chuck Kennedy and Community Development. Thanks, Chuck. Staff is great. I wish our attendance was a bit better. Uh, Friday, November seventh, special board meeting with supervisors to appoint Sheriff Dave Putnam. Congratulations, Dave. We have a lot of faith in you. Uh, Friday night, camped out with the Christian Reform Church cadets. That was an experience. I froze Mateo off. Uh, last Tuesday, knocked on doors in Armona and handed out surveys for the general plan. Wednesday, attended Mary Lerner's farewell celebration, and Mary will be missed. She's gonna join the council in Los Angeles, I believe. Also attended Board of Equalization Supervisors Thursday, Board of Equalization again, supervisors, and that night attended the Kings Economic Development Dinner with my wife at the Charm House. Uh, thank you, Julieta and Fabio for funding. For Armona General Plan surveys, uh, you can visit ImagineKingsCounty.com. Only because, uh, just, I know, I know, we're confusing with that. But if you just go on the, uh, if you go on the county's website, and you go on to, to Chuck's site there, you can, you can find it. Or just go ImagineKingsCounty.com, just to, uh, if you're from Armona or you work in Armona, you give your input under the flag. Um, lastly, I'd be remiss without saying this. So most of you already know this, but, but Dave is my first cousin. And, uh, and, and Dave's the reason, actually, that I'm here, because he called one day and, and mentioned it. But, uh, I, I just want to tell you, Dave, uh, you know, we've known each other now, what, about fifty-four years, I think?
Got me by six months.
There you go. And our, and our parents hauled us together all over the place. I mean, they haul us to places like Mount Whitney, right? And so, um, so Dave has always been the same. He is, and, and I mean that in a good sense. He has been fair. He has been even keeled. Uh, he just, he just has one of the, one of the best personalities you could have, particularly for the job that he has. Right? And so, um, the family couldn't be more proud of you. But I think your dad and my dad, really, I think they were your biggest cheerleaders. Everywhere I'd go with my daddy, he'd talk about Dave. And rightfully so. He should have. So, um, thank you for keeping us safe. Uh, Dave is a very honest person, but I gotta tell you, he fibbed a little bit when it came to me. I, I, I asked him, well, what does this thing entail? He says, ah, a couple hours on Tuesday. Couple hours on Tuesday. My wife says now I never.
A little bit, I'm just full of life.
My wife says now I never see you. Where are you? I said, I have a couple hours on Tuesday. Uh, but I gotta tell you, you're a hundred percent accurate as far as being rewarding, most rewarding of my life. So thank you for that, but, but mostly just, uh, thanks for keeping us all safe. We appreciate it, Dave.
Very good. I only have a couple things to add, same thing as the rest of the board, but had lunch with our Congressman Vince Fong on Monday. Uh, Veterans Day, did the car show in Hanford. Uh, Lamar Crab Feed, thanks, Alex, for getting me a ticket. And then I had dinner with David.
And then I had dinner with David Barnhart, uh, ex-secretary, Secretary of Interior in Fresno. Then I followed up with dinner with, uh, Economic Development Corporation with Julieta Martinez. That was really good. And also, uh, on Friday, I, uh, as I said before, I belong on the King's County Cog, which is run by, uh, all the, all the cities and counties here. I was appointed onto the Samuel Keane Valley JPA, which is, we run Amtrak. And so I got on that board, uh, years ago, so I keep track of what's going on high-speed rail because they wouldn't talk to us and they were kind of tying Amtrak to high-speed rail. So I got on the board, so I keep track of what's going on. And so I got yelled at every single meeting I went to, uh, because how dare you sue high-speed rail and on and on and on. Well, ten years later, I'm chairman of the board for, uh, Amtrak Samuel Keane's and we had a rebranding, uh, to the name of Gold Runner on Friday. So, which is kind of hilarious because my farm is called Gold Top Ranch. My, my property management company called Gold Top Investments. My, my car restoration business is Gold Top Restorations and now I got the Gold Runner. So it was really exciting. Uh, so I did the ribbon cutting, had about forty elected officials up there, had a marching band. I had the train sitting there, all brand new train and also buses. So, uh, very cool to be there. I even talked about that in my speech, the fact that I wasn't the, I wasn't the best, uh, best board member on the Amtrak Samuel Keane's and, uh, here I am leading the charge. So I got a lot of respect for the, for the whole, all eleven counties that support me and, uh, people showed up in force. So it was really kind of cool. And that was on Friday. So also, uh, Dave, I can't say anything else. Uh, and I met you when you were just a flunky in the back in the broom closet and, uh, now you're retired. So I'm jealous of you both, both ways. Before you didn't do nothing and now you did everything. Now you're retired. So I do wish you all the best and I know we'll be, we'll be in, uh, communication throughout the next couple of years and I'll see you Friday night too. So thank you.
Here you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have two staff reports. First is Carolyn Lee's Director of Human Resources. She has an update regarding National Retirement Security Month.
Thank you, Keria. Um, good morning again, Chairman, members of the board, Carolyn Lee's Human Resources Director. I do have a presentation that, um, Nellie Hernandez Personnel Analysts or sorry, Human Resources Analyst is going to share. Um, your board proclaimed, um, October, um, twenty twenty-five is National Retirement Security Month in Kings County. Um, please, next slide. Um, as part of this proclamation, Human Resources assigned all employees Neo-Gov, um, learn training throughout the month of October. Uh, the training included a series of short accessible videos, um, designed to help employees explore financial tools, tips and services that guided them toward a more secure retirement. Employees who completed the training and sent an email to Human Resources were also entered into a raffle. Uh, five winners were picked to receive a ten dollar Target gift card. Next slide, please. One thousand five hundred and twelve employees were enrolled in the Neo-Gov, uh, training. Over half of the employees enrolled completing this training, which is fifty-eight percent of our total employees of five hundred and, um, eight hundred and seventy-one employees, which was, uh, far surpassing our, our expectations. So thank you to all eight hundred and seventy-one employees who participated in that training to learn more about retirement with, uh, Mission Square. Um, next slide, please. The employees that notified Human Resources were entered into the raffle and five lucky winners were selected. We have Jennifer Farr, Investigative Assistant with the District Attorney's Office. Also pictured is Heather Kramer, Program Specialist with Human Services Agency and Chloe Montgomery, Deputy Probation Officer with the Probation Department. Next slide, please. Next, we also have Sylvia Chavez, Deputy Probation Officer with the Probation Department and Gail Holloman, uh, Deputy Global Guardian with the Public Guardian Veteran Services Department. Next slide, please. We would like to extend our sincere appreciation to the Board of Supervisors for adopting the resolution recognizing October as National Retirement Security Month. Your support shows a strong commitment to promoting financial wellness, empowering employees to plan for a secure and confident retirement. Thank you. And that concludes the staff report for HR. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, at this time, Lupa Vio actually has an update on elections.
Colonel Lippi.
Hi, good to meet you.
Good to have you.
You're well. Thanks for asking. Group of you with the Elections Office. Good, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I apologize for the late, uh, request. Curia, I just want to give you the board an update on the Avenue. Uh, recall efforts are happening now. Um, last November twelfth, it was the deadline for the petitions to be turned into our office. There is four petitions submitted for, uh, the first effort and the second effort is due December fifth. So as of, uh, the twelfth, when they submit those petitions, the, uh, average citizen, uh, the average signatures submitted were six hundred and forty. Uh, Mr. Persiado has six hundred and forty-six signatures. Uh, Letitia Gama is six hundred and forty-one. Paulo Hernandez, six hundred and forty-nine. David Reynosa, six hundred and forty-four. And all of those four efforts need five hundred and twenty-six to qualify to go to the ballot. Uh, we started signature val- uh, validating those signatures yesterday. We have until January seventh to complete those efforts. Um, I have asked my staff to, uh, assign, um, some of the, uh, our time to verify those signatures before January seventh. I would like to take this, uh, sufficiency, if, if there's, if the, uh, petition has the sufficient signatures, I would like to take the sufficiency certificate to the board or to the council members in Avenue on December eleventh. I've asked them to put me on their agenda for the eleventh of December, so I can go and present those to them if they meet the five hundred and twenty-six required signatures. Uh, again, uh, the December fifth, uh, petition, if it comes in, we should have it ready also to submit on the eleventh as well. Um, so the, if, if we're to meet the five hundred and twenty-six required signatures, the validated signatures, we're looking at the March, April, uh, special election for the city of Avenue only. There's two hu- two thousand two hundred and sixty-six, I believe, registered voters in that area that will be getting ballot to make those decisions for them. So we're still pending on those. Um, again, hopefully we'll have, uh, I'm, I'm very confident we'll have the petitions certified by the, uh, the December end date. So, um, if it does happen, the city of Avenue would have fourteen days to call the election. If they fail to call the election, I get five days to call the election. So we're hoping that, you know, they call it. If not, we'll be doing those efforts for them. So, any questions?
Yes, with, um, council. Uh, thank you. We appreciate that. Can you guys, um, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna do this anyways. Everyone knows what's going on, but it sounds like, um, if the signatures are verified and like you said, you go to Avenue City Council and they have the ability to, uh, to call an election. Um, can you look into the, uh, any, um, possible conflict of interest? Cause you have the city manager publicly, social media wise as well, um, even recently in the last week. Uh, he's put himself, in my opinion, in a, a conflict of interest, especially when he's the one coming here to pull the recall on council member Ricardo Verdugo, which is the December fifth reference that you're mentioning. And I just don't see how a city manager who's actively going door to door at night, getting signatures and coming to county and, um, trying to recall elected officials, how he'll be able to be on the dimes and make a determination on the four council members that he's publicly saying he doesn't want to be recalled to protect them. And so I, and, and I think when you call elections, part of that is strategic and I don't think he should be in a place, again, in my opinion, to be making any decisions that impact an election on, on what date to do that recall election. And that would be all I would put in without getting myself conflicted either. But I think it's a fair question.
You know, it's, it's, I think the, uh, your comments are pretty evident to myself in my office and to the general public. Um, short of being unethical, I think there's nothing illegal about the actions that he's taken in regards to requesting a recall on a sitting council member. He is a registered voter of the city and he's entitled to do so. As, uh, absent his petition with the city, he's, he's entitled to do what he just did. Um, in regards to calling the election, the election code is very specific. Um, upon presenting the certificate of sufficiency, if it meets the required signatures, uh, the governing body, in this case is the city of Avenue, they are gonna have fourteen days to call that election. That election needs to happen. Um, eighty-eight days, between eighty-eight to a hundred and twenty-five days of the day he's called. So potentially depending on when he's called, it's, you know, it could be a, again, a late March, um, election, early April election. Um, it, it all, you know, it's, it's, it's on them to call the election. If they fail to do so, then I'll be calling the election the very next day.
Uh, well, I guess that leads to, um, I mean, typically it's one person who ends up in a hot seat like that. So now you have you possibly four, you still gotta verify. But does that put the council, those four council members, um, in a conflict of interest as well for them to vote on that?
So those are some discussions that I asked our current county council to explore. Um, I know they've done some homework on uh, what happens if the entire board gets recalled or enough board members to not have a quorum? Um, so, I mean, it, it could be if he fails to call, if they failed to call the election because of lack of quorum, then that election responsibility of calling it will come to me. Right? Yeah. So the, the entire goal is to have a standard election for the city of Avenue, not to have it consolidated with any other election. So the goal is for us to have, you know, three days of early voting, just like we do with any other election within Kings County and not shortchange that community. They deserve it. They, they put in a lot of work and effort into this and I think it's, it's only fair to continue to do the process as fair and secure as possible.
Well, thank you. You're, you're being, um, you're having, uh, you're handling a tough si- situation with a lot of class and festivals. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Then, thank you very much.
I thank you. You guys have a good day. Thanks.
Hey, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for board correspondence, I have a few. So the board received correspondence on November fifth regarding the simplification of highway permitting process. The board received correspondence dated November fifth from the Kings County Farm Bureau regarding invitation on their annual meeting on November twentieth. The board also received correspondence dated November sixth from the Kings County Farm Bureau. Um, letting you know that Sheriff Dave Robinson has been the recipient of the twenty twenty-five President Award Honoring Leadership and Service to the County's Ag Community. The board received a Prop sixty-five hazardous material release report dated November fourth from the Kings County Department of Public Health regarding an incident that occurred on Highway forty-one and West Nevada Avenue in Stratford relating to forty gallons of diesel. The board received in an honest letter, uh, dated November tenth regarding the selection process for the sheriff. The board received, um, correspondence dated November fourth from Shaw Yoder um, and Lang regarding the election, the County Medical Service Program Governing Board. The board lastly received correspondence dated November twelve regarding invitation to attend Senator Melissa Hurtado's Open House on December fourth. For upcoming events, the Kings County Human Services Agency is hosting their twenty twenty-five Kings County Christmas Toy Drive for children in foster care. If you're interested in participating, please contact Desiree Soto at the Human Services Agency or contact administration before November twenty-first. There is always a need for children in foster care for presents. So, um, this is, um, we did put a press release out on that one. Kings County Child Support Services is hosting their annual Slipper Stock Drive to donate slippers to senior citizens in Kings County. You can drop off your slippers donations at our Cornerstone Cafe in Hanford or the KCAO or Kings County Administration Office or the Kings County Child Support Services downtown. Donation deadline is December eighth. Uh, Griswall, uh, would like to have its, with having its Christmas window unveiling on December fifth at six thirty PM at their offices located in downtown Hanford for upcoming agenda items. The following agenda items are for, for November twenty-fifth. Administration has five items, the annual Williams Report on Kings County Schools, Fifth Amendment to the Employee Health Center Agreement, an agreement for intelligent defense services, the Ag Commissioner Appointment. And Behavioral Health has one item regarding Ruby's Valley Care Home Facility. County Council has two items on some appointments of directors and trustees. Uh, HR has an item on a side letter between the county and Detentions Deputy Association. And HSA has an item on a master license service agreement for property and facilities to be used as emergency and disaster shelters. An agreement on Flexless Global. And lastly, Library has one item regarding Kettleman City Library use by Kings County, uh, by KCAO. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn over to council to outline closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the board today will hear conference with labor negotiators, all units. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, which is Richard Levy, Workers' Comp Appeals Board Case. And conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, two cases. I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
Do we have any public comment? Saying none, we'll, we'll adjourn and we'll have a meeting here today at, uh, one o'clock for Mid-Kings GSA and we'll be back here on November twenty-fifth, nine AM. Thank you very much.